Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Flynn. I'm the chairman of the Board of Finance here in Fairfield. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Michael Tetra, who's also a member of our Board of Finance. You have a Republican and a Democrat tonight, so we are bipartisan. This is the first time we're doing this show, so if we come off like Abbott and Costello, please forgive us. And don't tell us which one is which.
Actually, if we come off that, please hire us.
This is true. I want to thank Mary and the rest of the PTA Council and your executive committee for inviting us here tonight. The goal of tonight's discussion is to give you a glimpse, or a better glimpse, into the budget process for the town. At this time of year, Mike and I, as well as our fellow colleagues, receive a vast amount of email and/or phone calls, and spend a good chunk of our time dealing with misinformation, disinformation, and merely management by rumor and innuendo. And our thought is that by holding forums like these with organizations like PTA Council and the League of Women Voters, we would be able to better explain the budget process so that people would know what happens during the months of February, March, and April as the town decides on its spending for the next year. What we're trying to accomplish is so that you'll know where decisions are made, how the process works, how you might be able to influence the process, as well as what some of the drivers of our budget has been for the last several years and will be moving forward from our perspective. Now, remember, you're talking to two Board of Finance members, so it is going to be from our perspective, and we will make comments from that point of view this evening. I hope you find it interesting. I hope we learn a lot from you, as you learn from us, and we look forward to a lively question-and-answer period after. The agenda: We're going to do a brief budget overview. We're going to look at some current-year operating budget facts. We're going to tell you about the budget approval process, and we're going to look forward a little bit at some of the challenges we face, and then we'll do questions and answers. To start off, we had a little technical problem with audiovisual this evening. We do have handouts here of this presentation, so why don't I give everybody a moment? And please come on up and grab a copy of the handout, and you can follow along. Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, on page two is the agenda, which I outlined. And on page three, we're starting with an overview, very simply. What are the budget years? Currently, we are in the fiscal year 2011, which is the year that will end, the fiscal year that will end, on June 30th. The budget we're approving that's before our board right now is the fiscal year 2012 budget, which means it's for the year beginning July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2012. It's a very key point, because sometimes it gets very confusing as to which fiscal year you're actually talking about. Mike, do you want to speak a little bit to the three components?
Thank you. As we go through the budget process, there are different buckets that dollars go into. And we kind of talk fluently about all of them, but sometimes if you're not involved in the process, you don't quite understand the differences between them. First one is the operating budget. This is what you normally think of as income and revenue. And we're not used, this is not a review of the budget that we're currently approving and we started the process in last night, but we did throw in some numbers from the fiscal year 2011 budget, the one we approved last year and that we're running now, just to give you a magnitude of what we're talking about, so you have a framework. And the budget, the total budget for the town and the Board of Ed, was approximately $252 million. Lot of money. In addition to the operating budget, we have what we call a capital improvements budget, or what until recently was called a nonrecurring capital budget. These are items that we typically bond over three to five years, or five to eight years, in that kind of time period. They're generally in the range of $50,000 to $1 million. And last year, fiscal 2011, we approved $3.7 million in this budget. These are things like some of the window repairs, some of the oil tank replacement, occasionally a fire truck, that type of thing that comes into this range. Then we have major, the third group is major capital initiatives. These are generally over $1 million each. They're generally financed over 20 years or so. Recent examples would be Fairfield Woods Middle School, the renovations, Stratfield Elementary School, and these projects may be eligible for partial state reimbursement. Okay, so operating, capital improvement or nonrecurring, and major capital projects. If you turn the page, next section is current-year operating budget facts. And let's talk about revenue first. Taxes represent 91% of our revenue. Now, all the numbers we're using are approximate. It might be, you know, 89.9 or 91.5. We're keeping it simple for government purposes, if you will. Approximately 85% of our taxes come from residential homeowners, and about 15% from commercial property. Two takeaway there. One, if taxes go up, it's coming from a homeowner. Two, even though commercial taxes may go up a lot, they're only 15% of the budget. So even if they go up 10%, which would be huge, that's only 1.5% difference in the budget. So for the most part, our income is driven by residential taxes, and it's residential homeowners that are footing the bill. Our non-tax revenue is about 9%. In fiscal '11, this was $23 million. An important fact here is the trend. That was down from $25 million the year before. All right, so we lost $2 million in non-tax revenue. Anybody want to guess where we make that up? From tax revenue. And that's one of the challenges that we're seeing. When you hear about non-tax revenue going down, when you hear about state grants going down, when you hear about federal grants going down, there's only one place we get to make that up. The only thing the town can do, other than encourage you guys to play a lot of golf, because we make money there too, is raise your taxes.
And Mike, another point there. When you lose $2 million of revenue from another bucket, in order to even keep taxes level, you need to start by finding $2 million in expense reductions. So you're already starting out at a negative from a tax perspective of $2 million when funding from the state or the federal government goes away.
And building on what Tom said, the total tax revenue for fiscal '11 was $229 million. And again, to keep it simple, that means every $2 million represents a 1% tax increase. So if we lose $2 million in non-tax revenue, we have to raise everybody's taxes 1% to make that back up, or come up with $2 million in expense cuts or a combination thereof.
To stay flat.
All right. But it's a zero-sum game. Whenever we talk about things, we already know what the answer is. The answer is $252 million. So whenever we talk about revenue going up, or this going down, the answer's always going to be $252 million, because that's what we need to run the town. In non-tax revenue, we've got state grants, some of which are reimbursable, some are non-reimbursable. We've got ECS, which is educational cost sharing, which should be near and dear to the hearts of everybody in the room. That's the state money that comes through, that flows through to the education budget. There's certain components of that, one of which that you need to keep in mind is minimum budget requirement. The state has changed this recently, but the gist is simply this: If the town were to cut the education budget below last year, there's a two-for-one penalty that the state will take back. So the way it works is this: Let's say we cut the educational budget to $1 million below what it was last year. The state's going to say, "We're going to take $2 million out of your ECS grant the following year." The state is basically saying, with a very stiff financial penalty, "Don't cut your education budget." That doesn't mean you can't reduce the increase that's requested. It does mean you can't reduce it below last year without paying a financial penalty. Everybody okay with that? It was a year ago, there was a lot of confusion over that point, and I just wanted to make sure we're all comfortable with that.
Understood, but not okay.
Okay. Talk to your favorite state rep. Federal grants, we don't get very many of those. You're obviously, or hopefully, familiar with the most recent version of that, which is the Fed stimulus money, or the ARAG grants, and we got about $512,000 a year, the last two years, as part of that. One of the complications we face is timing. We're going to vote on, the Board of Finance votes on March 31st. The RTM votes first week in May, and we set the mill rate, the first week in May. Once we set the mill rate, the budget revenue is finalized. When does the state finalize their budget and confirm how much money we're actually getting from the state? June, with the obvious exception of last year, when it was October. But, so you'll find Tom and I doing a lot of praying from about May 1st to June 30th, hoping that the state actually delivers what we put in the budget. But the glitch is, we can't change the mill rate in mid-year. Once we lock in that mill rate, that's it. So if we don't get the non-tax revenue we expected, we run a loss or a deficit, and have to make that up.
Why not the one year?
You mean the guys who couldn't come up with a budget until October?
No.
That's when they're supposed to do it. And, you know, they borrowed, they borrowed $1 billion to do it last year. We're not quite sure where that's going to come out. And to be fair, I mean, there's a whole bunch of innovative proposals that the governor's put in this year, and we're not getting into the state budget at all. I don't mean to do that. I just meant to do it in terms of our timing. The state comes up with a two-year budget when they do it. I would suggest that you are absolutely correct. There's no reason they couldn't agree on a two-year budget in February, starting in July, rather than having to wait till June to come up with a two-year budget that starts in July. And I know there's at least one state rep here that heard that. I don't know if there's any others. And I know she'll have that in effect in the next 60 days. But just so you understand some of the constraints we're under, so when we do make some guesses, if you will, and we're guessing on some of that.
And Mike, to your point, based on statute, we're already as late as we can possibly be as to when the town approves its budget. Because if you think about it, the budget gets approved in very early May. The mill rate gets set in very early May. Operationally, there's a bunch of things that need to happen before that budget actually takes place, or goes into effect on July 1st. So you're really only giving the town, the people that are actually operating the organization, 60 days to be up to speed and then running under that new budget for the next fiscal year.
One of the other places we get revenue in the non-tax revenue side is from fees for services. One of those fees for services, conveyance tax. Anybody sell a house lately? See, that's one of the problems with the real estate market. You guys got to get back there and sell. But from the top, the conveyance tax was $1.10 a thousand, kind of like a sales tax when you sell a house. The state raised that to 2.5, and this is the local municipal version, municipality version of the tax, the 2.5 or $2.50 per thousand. But then they've kind of been doing that two years at a time. So like this June, it's currently, that increase is supposed to sunset and go back to $1.10 per thousand. Unless the governor gets his proposal, in which case the 2.50 per thousand could go up to $5 per thousand. So here's where we are. We're going to vote on this budget. We're going to put in a number for conveyance tax, and we don't know if it's going to be $1.10, $2.50, or $5, starting July 1st. We don't get paid to make these decisions. This is all volunteer work. Foreclosures and short sales, the state made another adjustment where they took those out of it. They actually didn't do an economic impact on that, so we're looking at that, and we're kind of going through this year, trying to see how big an impact that is and what that does to our conveyance tax. Building permits, it's another source of non-tax revenue. And again, that kind of flows with the housing market and our commercial construction market. When commercial buildings are going up, those are very big buildings with very complex permits, and we make more money on those. So when Whole Foods is going in, that's a really good thing, because they're going to use nice, big permits. Sacred Heart adds a building, Fairfield U adds a building, Clayban, Mr. Clayban expands downtown again. That's all good on that side. Golf fees, that's another big source of income. And so one of the things we did recently is invest in the golf course in order to get more rounds in. Oh, by the way, if you do play golf, please take a cart. That kind of increases the money we make there, and saves you in taxes in the long run. See how great it is? You can play golf and save taxes. Is there a better town out there, or what? Interest and dividend income. We invest our money. We have lots of money sitting in the bank for kind of short-term purposes, so we kind of invest it overnight. We make a little bit of money on it, but it adds up to a lot. We used to make about $2 million a year on it. Because all the interest rates have come down dramatically in the last few years, we're now down to about $1 million or less. And again, when non-tax revenue comes down, we have to make that up someplace by either cutting expenses or raising taxes. There are some departments that have minimal tax impacts, solid waste and recycling fees, Water Pollution Control Authority or SOR tax fees. Those are smaller pieces, and I'm going to let Tom step in here for a minute.
All right, I got the expense side of the ledger. Before we go into expenses, though, on the revenue side, Mike just made some very important points. With non-tax revenue, whether it be the fees associated with real estate, conveyance, building permits, any of those items, your golf fees, your interest in dividends, which was $1 million, as the bond markets fell apart, the interest in dividends came down by $1 million. All of that has to be made up for in either tax increases or expense cuts, just to maintain tax neutrality. That's without doing a quote-unquote "tax cut." And when the economy suffers, the town's other revenue suffers right along with it, because it's all based on that activity. On the spending side, this crowd will be interested to note that the Board of Education represents about 56% of the entire operating budget for the town of Fairfield. So of the $252 million, they represent about 56% of that in the last fiscal year. No teachers received raises or step increases in that fiscal year budget. In the fiscal year 2012 budget, by contract, the teachers receive raises, and the steps are back in the budget. Important to note, and this is, this is one of those things that is misinformation at times. The Board of Finance gets a lot of mail, email, or phone calls during the budget process about, "Don't cut this from Fairfield Woods. Don't cut the band, okay? Don't cut the sports program. Don't cut special education." The Board of Finance gets the vote on one number. One number. The town gives the Board of Ed the funding. The Board of Education sets the priorities as to what they fund. So if the Board of Education decides that it's more important to have this curriculum versus that, that's how that funds get spent. If they decide that it's more important to have an athletic team versus a band function, that is a call that the Board of Education makes. The Board of Finance, despite voting on one number, after voting on one number, and in fact, the Board of Selectmen, after voting on one number, and the RTM, we have no control over how that money is spent.
I want to point out, that's a state requirement.
Thank you very much. That is a state requirement. It's statutorily required. Once approved in the budget, the line item cannot be reduced without the Board of Ed's approval. So once that funding is there, once it goes through the town bodies, and it's set, the Board of Ed is on their own to do what they wish.
Question?
Yes?
So if they request an allocation based on certain line items, and then they don't use those line items, don't apply the budget to those line items, can you do something the following year?
It's at their discretion, as to how they spend the money.
Tom, you may want to, you may want to repeat the question, because that wasn't on a mic.
Oh, thank you, Mike. The question was, and that's a very good point, if we have questions, we do have to get them through a microphone so that we have them for prosperity. Prosperity? Wrong word. Postarity.
It's okay. He wasn't a graduate of the federal school system.
Yeah, exactly. And we had a meeting, exactly. And we had a meeting till 12:30 last night. No. The question was, if the Board of Education gets approved their budget, and then after the budget cycle, they decide to spend the money in some other fashion, paraphrasing. So they came in and said they were going to spend it on teachers, and then they turned around and spent it on something else after the budget process. What can be done about it, correct? We get the vote on one number. There's nothing that we can do about it. Now, we can hold hearings on it the next year and ask for explanations to get a better understanding of what's happened. And we can presumably, if we don't like the explanation, maybe trim the budget that year and say, "We don't like what you did here." But truthfully, it's their funding, their budget, at their full discretion to do what they'd like to do with it after it's approved. Yes, Mary?
In here, you say it's 56% of our total operating budget. How unusual is that for a town?
I don't have the actual facts on other towns, but from talking to other chairmans of Board of Finance, it's not that unusual. The Board of Education are typically the largest department in town. In terms of the percentage basis, I'm not exactly sure. Mike, do you know?
Yeah, just generally, it's higher than that. It's, you'd find a lot in the 60% to 65% range, and there's a one-year anomaly that makes it that low.
That's right.
The teachers didn't take any raises.
Right.
Otherwise, that 56% would be higher, because it would have had to comprehend that the teacher raises into that, too. And the administrators didn't take raises, too. I didn't mean to leave them out of that mix.
Shortchange them, right. And by the way, I don't, I don't want to imply that it happens often where we approve a budget, and then the Board of Education goes and does something completely different with the money. Okay? They might adjust their funding afterwards, and they did that last year. But it's, it's not like they go in and put a budget together and then go crazy and spend it on something completely different typically. Okay? We have not seen that.
But would you ever guess that it was designated for teachers, and they did not accept a raise, if they'd say, "Okay, we're giving you back"? Never happened, right?
There, the question is, if the funding was designated for teachers and they did not get a raise, would, would we ever get that money back? Okay? The answer to that is yes. In prior years, when the town was particularly 2009, okay, when the, when the stock market cratered, when there was high unemployment, not that there's still not high unemployment, but when the world went into a financial tailspin, there was emergency meetings of the town bodies, because we had some concerns over the revenue coming into the town. The Board of Education gave funding back to the town in that fiscal year to help with that shortfall. So they did play ball in that situation.
And that was the only reason that, the funds returned by the Board of Ed, or the only reason the town finished in the black that year. Without that money being returned, the town would have finished in the red and run a deficit.
Rich?
The Board of Ed does approve budget transfers. At the end of each fiscal year, the Board of Ed approves budget transfers within the account. So if they put in the budget one number, and they don't spend it, they disclose it, and they vote on it.
Yep. And they transfer it within their own budget. Yep, that's absolutely correct. But they control that. Now, within the last couple of budget cycles, there's been one-time sources of funding. Approximately $500,000 came from the government stimulus, from the federal stimulus package. That was over the past two years. That money goes away. In addition, in the current budget year, the fiscal year 2011, they had had a reserve account for their insurance reserves from prior years. In order to help balance the budget for last year, they took about $1.5 to $1.6 million out of that reserve account, lowering the reserves for the town as a whole. In the current budget that's before us, which is the 2012 budget, which we discussed partially last evening, the proposed budget use is about $1.9 million of what remains in that reserve account. So that's an internal service fund that's there for risk management for both the town side and the Board of Education side, for things such as medical insurance, liability insurance, workman's compensation. That's what the Internal Service Fund handles. So right now, the budget that's before us does not fully fund the actual costs of health insurance for the Board of Education employees for the next fiscal year. It uses some reserves built up from overfunding of prior years, multiple prior years, to cushion their budget this year. Okay? Very complicated, and we had a long discussion about that last night. But that is an issue. And at some point, when those reserves are gone, there's an immediate, immediate budget hit, because you have to cover the cost of the health insurance for your employees. Okay?
I have a quick question. The Internal Service Fund.
Yes.
How do I know in his budget book if any of the money is being used to build up an Internal Service Fund? There's no account here, he was operating budget. So how, like I asked you, for example, the town had $2 million of profit on the books. Is that budget profit, or was that profit that was found? Where does that profit go to? Is it in the reserve account? Is it used by anybody to spend this year?
Yeah, there's two funds that the account, there's several funds that the town runs. Two biggest one being the general fund, which is primarily your operating accounts. Okay, so when you talk about there being a surplus, okay, or the town was able to save money, okay, the excess funds go, stay in the general fund. So they stay in the bank accounts of the town in the quote-unquote "general fund." The reason for that is, we only have about 5%, a little under 5% of our entire budget within that general fund, which, by the way, for a AAA-rated community, is a small amount of money. They actually want that to be higher. So to your question about the operating account, when you hear that, when you hear the first selectman talk about that, that's the general fund. And that's to cover things, God forbid, we have any catastrophic event, right? God forbid we have, I don't know, six snowfalls over 12 inches, right, in a two-month period, right? That, those funds sit there, available, if necessary, to help cover catastrophic events like that. Okay? That's the general fund. There's a separate fund called the Internal Service Fund. It's not in the Board of Ed budget book. It's a separate fund, okay, which both the town and the Board of Ed contribute into this Internal Service Fund. That Internal Service Fund is there specifically for insurance purposes: medical insurance, risk insurance, workman's comp insurance. And what you do is, you look at the cash balance in that account, that reserve fund, every year, and you try to maintain a cash balance within the account. You also look at the accrual accounts, because if anybody knows anything about insurance, they have runoff for a long period of time. Everything doesn't get settled at one point. Okay? At the end of the year, the rating agencies look at where those funds stand. Are you positive? Are you negative? Do you have reserved enough? Do you have exposure there? So when the funds get collected from teachers or other employees towards their medical insurance, and the town puts in their portion, or the Board of Education puts in their portion, they go into a fund, and then all those claims are paid out of that fund. What has ever's left over stays as a reserve. If you've got a deficit, those funds have to come from prior reserves to cover that. Okay? Great. Does anybody else have any questions? It's very complicated. Yes, please. And please, I'll try to repeat your question. If I get it wrong, let me know.
In the fund, there's money that the Board of Ed has put in?
Yes.
Money that the town has put in?
Yes.
What is the balance of Board of Ed, the town?
There's money put in by both the town and the Board of Ed. I'm not going to quote exact numbers up here, because I don't have them exactly with me. Over the course, I guess the crux of your question, if I might add, over the course of a number of years, the Board of Ed has followed guidance put forth by their insurance advisors, and they've built up a cushion within the account, a reserve within the account. Okay? The town, okay, hasn't necessarily followed that same guidance, and they have a deficit within the account. Okay? We've also gotten hit with some catastrophic workman's We've also gotten hit with some catastrophic workman compensation claims in the last year and a half to two years, okay? When you add them all together, right, the fund is not as robust as you would like. Now, what the Board of Education is elected to do, okay, is take some of those reserves, amounts of those reserves, chunks of those reserves, okay, and cushion their current and prior year budgets, right, due to budget cuts that had been implemented by other town bodies. Therefore, they're no longer fully funding their insurance costs based on the estimates provided by the insurance professionals, okay? On the town side, our board recognized this a number of years ago and began to push the town administration to actually up their increase, up their medical benefits. Last year, tough budget year, we increased their contributions by $250,000, okay? We did that not because we wanted to spend more money, but because they weren't covering their costs, and they were running up a deficit, okay? The trick is balancing the two, right? My concern as a Board of Finance for the entire town, not for the Board of Education or just the town, is that we need to keep the reserve whole for the credit rating agencies and to make sure we're covered until such time as the town can build up more of their cushion. And I would prefer that the Board of Education uses their cushion more slowly so that we minimize the year-to-year impact on the taxpayer. Does it make sense?
And just to add on to that a bit, because I think part of your question might have been, those funds are accounted for entirely separately. So they're broken out separately. So you can track the activity, both the claims being paid and the revenue coming in separately. So there's no mixing of funds from an accounting record standpoint on that side. The rating agencies look at each one of those, and then as a group, to look at kind of what the town overall reserve is and to see whether they're comfortable with what our level of reserve is. So as Tom said, there's a lot of different pieces, kind of like a little bit like pick-up sticks. There's a lot of sticks down there, and you move one, and it kind of affects a bunch of others. So you have to look at all of that. And again, I think our board has probably been more active in looking at those over the past four or five years to make sure that the town overall is maintaining the appropriate reserves.
And Mike's point is very valid. The key is the rating agencies look at it overall. So our concern is financial stewards of the town, right, collectively the town, has to be overall, not just one side or the other, okay? It's a sandbox that both parties have to play in at the same time, okay? Does that help? So those are, that's what's going on with the Board of Education, and that's some of the stresses on the Board of Education budget over the next couple of years. On the town side, the town side represents 35% of the total operating budget, so $86 million, significantly smaller than the Board of Education side. This would be all your town departments, police, fire, library, administration, DPW, all of those. They also maintain the reserve accounts, the workman's compensation accounts, and a lot of the insurance accounts. And this is directly related to the Internal Service Fund that we were just talking about. That's the town side of the budget, okay? Debt service represents 9%. Now, Mike pointed out very correctly that last year was a little bit of an anomaly because teachers did not take raises and some other things. The debt service only represented 9%. Typically, the debt service represents about 10% of the town budget. Now, going back a little bit, I don't know how many of you recall that over the summer, we held a capital planning summit, a long-term capital planning summit, to discuss what the town could afford going forward for capital projects and the like. And there was a key number spoken about at that summit, and the first selectman spoke about it quite a bit, which was 10%. And that 10% was that you don't want your debt service cost to go higher than 10% of your budget, or at least you want it in the neighborhood of 10% of your overall budget. And that's about where we were and where we are, which is why we asked for a long-term capital plan to see how we would fund over the next few years and make sure that that debt did not vastly exceed that threshold with all the projects that everybody wants around the town at one point or another, okay? So of the budget, 56% last year, or this current year, Board of Education, 35% of the town, and 9% for debt service, $24 million. And that's projected to continue at this level or higher based on the current financial plans through 2018. Mike, do you want to take over for the budget approval process? And please, it's kind of weird that put questions and answers at the end, but feel free, this can be interactive. If you have any questions, just raise your hand, and we'll do our best to answer them. Please, sir.
I'm new to this whole thing, and what I'm learning fast is that there's some really dedicated townspeople working hard for nothing in a very complicated area, so I'm getting educated. I'll tell you, my frustration is trying to understand, are we doing the right things? And for me, the problem is there aren't measurements. The one you just mentioned, don't go over 9% on debt.
Right.
But how about, is our cost per student in line in Fairfield? Is our performance on the investments good compared to other people? In other words, some checkpoints that we can use to say, "Hey, we're online, and here's how we measure it," versus a sea of numbers that we can't sort through. So maybe you're doing those checkpoints, but I wish they were available to the public and more transparent.
I can do it as well.
One, thank you. We are very hardworking. Either that, or we don't have a social life, one or the other. At least you don't charge us to be here, right? Let's see, from the top, there are a bunch of ratios out there, there are a bunch of numbers. A lot of them are on the websites. I'm in real estate, all right? And one of the things that buyers do when they're comparing towns is get on the web and look at different school districts. Fairfield does very well on a lot of those metrics, all right? My customers remind me of that every day, so it's very nice to be a Realtor and having Fairfield as part of your product line. In terms of some of the other metrics, we've tried to develop some of those over time, and... Do you want to address some of those on the financial side?
Yeah, what we've done is, thank you, Mike, and first of all, thanks for the kind comments. We might work hard, but quite frankly, I've never regretted being on this board. I've enjoyed every part of it, and it's been an absolute joy. And I'm thankful every day that I get the opportunity, well, not every day, but most days, I'm thankful that I get to do it. Over the past five or six years, we've actually developed benchmarks to do exactly what you're talking about. In fact, just before we came in here, I was meeting with Dr. Title, who's here for the first year, and we were talking very specifically. Our board likes to look at things in terms of return on investment. Now, that's difficult to do when you're talking about a service organization, and you're talking about children, and you're talking about fire, and you're talking about police. But we track things all over town. On the Board of Ed side, some of the things we look for at our board, you come to a Board of Finance meeting for the budget side, and we'll be looking at test scores. We'll be looking at rankings. We'll be looking at how much we went up. We'll be looking at what percentage of our students go to college. We'll be looking at what type of colleges they go to, all to prove to ourselves and our colleagues and our brethren that the funds that we are actually dedicating to education are actually having an impact in the classroom, okay? That's one. On the town side, we track how many calls the fire department goes to, what level of service, what are their response times of the fire department. All these things are tracked. Much of the information, or in fact, all of the information that we get at one point or another, and quite frankly, some of it is information overload, is typically available on the town websites. And we get binders and binders of it each year. But we've developed those benchmarks, working with the administration, working with the Board of Education, to try to make sure that we are achieving those. We've also done things, two years ago, our board spent, I think it was $40,000 on a special study to go compare the benefits that we offer our employees across the town compared to other communities across the state to make sure that when the first selectman went into his negotiations for contracts, that we understood where we stood in comparison to other communities and what they were offering their employees. We also implemented in the past year and a half, or year, two operational audits, one under the auspices of the Board of Education for the Board of Education side, looking at best practices to make sure that the town on that side was following through on those items and learning from what other school systems has done. We funded the same thing on the town side to make sure that they went through and looked at town operations. Now, you can argue, we can disagree, we can say, "What's a proper service level? Are we paying too much? Do we want to pay for that?" Those are all valid considerations. And as a community, those are discussions we need to have. But in terms of benchmarking and in terms of tracking that information, we're doing our darndest to make sure that it's there and it's available. Sure.
And we also look at other AAA towns across the state. So we kind of compare ourselves to like communities that are financially in good shape. We're not comparing ourselves to the bottom end of the bucket and just trying to make ourselves look good.
Yeah.
Charlotte?
For the third train station.
Yeah.
We have date that's now open with...
October 13th.
Of this year, so are we projecting?
I'm kidding. She didn't ask me for the correct date. All right. I went, she said a date. I picked one.
So, and then do we, are we like projecting how much revenue the town is getting? And will this be maybe whenever it opens, with all these buildings coming in?
Yeah.
Could...
And that would be, I mean, it's not on your list.
It might be a little late. Could you hold that question? Because I'm looking at the time and thinking we've got to get through the rest of this, and that would be a great question to kick off our Q and A part.
Yeah, and just before we leave the expense side of the equation, there's the good question asked about the 56%, and Mike's right. In the past, we did know that most towns were in around the 60% range. May I ask the Education Administration who's here tonight, can we follow up on that and find out, you know, given all the tumult of the markets over the last couple of years? It'd be another interesting data point to have for our discussion during the budget process of where are the other towns on that?
Little tough, I think, in the current turmoil because there are a number of school districts out there that are taking zero, didn't get their zeros in in their contracts last year, a number getting a...
Right.
So it's kind of an apples and oranges kind of comparison. But I'm sure Dr. Title, with all his copious free time, would have no trouble pulling that.
And noting where the zeros weren't in there.
Sorry, Dr. Title.
Go ahead with the...
Quickly, we're talking about the budget process. The Legal Women Voters has come up with a brand-new brochure, hot off the presses, completely updated with... If I can open it up, you can see all the, oh, no, there are no color photos, sorry. You can see all the black and white, but this is freshly updated. And I think it's important to everybody to pick up a copy of these and learn about the process. Keep this with you. The process is important because it doesn't change that much from year to year, and it'll start to make more sense of a lot of things that are going on out there. Nothing is quite as bad as realizing there was something really important to you, and we voted on it yesterday. So don't let that happen. Coming back to the process, when you look at how Fairfield does its budget, and this is very similar to most towns in the state of Connecticut, but not identical. One, the first selectman, as you saw about a month ago, presents the budget and his recommendations to the Board of Finance. And it comes packaged in a nice orange and black notebook in honor of Roger Ludlough High School, which is where I went, and our black and orange colors, that were the colors of our flying tigers. And you didn't know tigers could fly. What we're doing right now is holding joint sessions with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. As Tom mentioned earlier, we were here in this very room last night till just after midnight. We'll be back here tomorrow if you have free time. The Board of Selectmen in late March reviews and makes recommendations to the Board of Finance coming out of those meetings. The Board of Finance, we can make adjustments, up or down. We can increase a line, we can decrease a line. We can't tell the Board of Education what to spend their $142 million on, but we do get to decide whether it's $141 or $143 million. Once we do that, on March 31st, it goes to the RTM. They have further committee meetings, and they have their meeting in late April. And then the first week in May, first Monday in May, they will typically vote on the budget. The Board of, the RTM can reduce numbers. They cannot increase them. And it's our custom that the RTM generally only look at the expense side, not the revenue side of the ledger. If a border commission doesn't like what the Board of Finance did, it can be appealed to the RTM. And for those of you that were around three or four years ago, that actually happened. The Board of Ed didn't think we gave them enough money. They appealed to the RTM, and it takes two, it must be a formal request. There's a process defined in our charter. They must follow guidelines in the charter, and it requires a two-thirds vote of the RTM to make up that number. And the RTM didn't restore all the funding, but it did restore part of the funding that time. And for those of you following along, I just finished page 11. I'm turning to page 12. As I mentioned, the RTM can reduce but not increase, and they have to do it a line item at a time. They cannot go to the police department and say, "Cut it by 10%." They have to go to every line within the budget for the police department and cut that by 10%. If the town doesn't like what the RTM passes as a budget, they can hold a referendum on it. The referendum can reduce or increase a line item. But they cannot, the referendum cannot increase that line item above the amount that was originally passed by the Board of Finance. So in essence, if a department doesn't like what the Board of Finance does, they can appeal to the RTM. If the citizens don't like what the RPM did, they can appeal in a referendum format to the rest of the citizenry and get that collected. Based on the RTM-approved budget and based on the final review of tax collection rates, the Board of Finance sets the mill rate for the year, and we do that the first week in May. And as I said, then we hold our breath for two months while the state passes their budget, and we hope that we all agree. Any questions on that? All right, next up, looking forward, some ongoing challenges and some budget pressures. Ongoing budget challenges on the revenue side. We talked about conveyance tax, and again, just to use some numbers, in fiscal year '09, we had $1.8 million coming in in conveyance tax. In fiscal year '11, that number had dropped to $1.1 million. We lost $700,000 in that one line item of revenue alone. Interest income declined from approximately $2 million a year in fiscal '09 to $1 million in fiscal '11. So that's another million. So that's $1.8 in just those two line items. The decline in non-tax revenues has increased a lot of pressure to raise, or produced a lot of pressure to raise property taxes or cut expenses further. That's what's giving, actually, that's what's giving me gray hair. How are you doing it?
Three kids.
State and federal budget issues are also impacting our future because we're not quite sure what's going to happen, given the budget challenges on the state and federal level. Onto expenses.
Yep. In 2009, our expenses as a town in fiscal year 2009, our expenses as a town were $245,500,000 approximately. In 2011 budget, the current budget year, were $251,500,000, or approximately $6 million increase in spending over a two-year period, or 2.4%, 2.5%. Now, all of us have expense pressures in our daily lives, and all of us can pick up the newspaper and read of any town, municipality, state, or even the federal government and see what they're facing. While I think we've handled our finances better than many of our brethren around the nation, it doesn't mean that we're not impacted. Health insurance, self-insurance, is up 20.5% since 2009, and it's forecast to go up another 10% in the next fiscal year.
Is that in line with outside insurance companies?
That is given to us by outside insurance companies, yes. And we've asked for an analysis to make sure that it is still appropriate for us to self-insure as opposed to go to insurance companies for funding. It's a conversation we have repeatedly. I believe our insurance experts still tell us that, in their opinion, self-insurance is still beneficial. But it is an analysis we will ask to have done yet again.
And just to be clear on that, well, it's something that's a technical financial skill. The pension fund, or the amount we're going to put into our pension fund, we bring in actuaries for that. For the amount that we're going to put into our retiree medical benefit fund, we bring in an actuarial for that. For the insurance components, we bring in an insurance consultant for that. So we're using their numbers. We're not sitting down here making these up on our own.
But I have concern when the actuary uses 8% growth on investments. For the past 10 years, the S and P was flat.
The question regards, or the comment regards, the 8% used on investment return presumably on our pension funds, which is what's been getting the play lately. Yeah, our board has expressed our concern with that as well. Me personally, I've expressed my own concern with that. What we've asked for is that the pension board, which is responsible for the pension funds, bring in their consultant and review all the assumptions that are used for their go-forward projections. Well, that assumption, I think, is quite aggressive at the 8%. There are some other assumptions that may be quite conservative on the other side. So we want to ask, and we have asked, that the actuary work with the pension board, do a census on our pensioners, and update the assumptions that haven't been updated in four years to make sure that we've got the best available information for the next budget cycle. They tell us that'll take several months to do.
Let me ask a simple question.
Sure.
The past 10 years, let me take it from 2009 back to 2000.
Yeah.
Did we ever have a year of 8%?
They had a year, well, this current year, ending last July 1st, they had a year of over 9%, but of course, the markets rebounded tremendously.
It was unusual.
Yes, it was. And I know that their investment return for the last 10-year period, based on reports that we were just given, was somewhere in the neighborhood of between 3 and 4% in total, not nearly the 8%. I don't have that on an annual basis. We have that on the decade as a whole.
But what I'm wondering, I have disbelief that we can watch 3 and 4% returns and still project 8%. Where is the actuary questioning their own assumptions?
The actuary doesn't, the assumption is given to the actuary by the town, and it's a consistent assumption, and by the way, I'm not saying I agree with the assumption, but it's a consistent assumption that other towns are using for their pension benefits. We've asked them to go back and revisit that assumption due to the exact same question and concern that you're raising here.
Have we assessed what that over assumption on return has done to the under funding?
I might, I might suggest again, that's one question we might, because we've spent hours talking about this in Board of Finance meetings, and if we could hold that so we can get through the rest of the process part of this...
No, no, that's...
Don't want to avoid the question, just want to get through the process part of the presentation for everybody, and then happy to stay and answer that and talk much longer, but that's a...
By the way, a little plug here for Fair TV. They actually have that meeting where we discussed OPEB and pension gets replayed. I'm reminded tremendously because I wore this ugly orange sweater, and people keep on pointing that out to me. But if you can get by the sweater, I've heard that that meeting is still playing.
Actually, it's one of our highest-rated shows.
Exactly. They almost look like a purple dinosaur or something.
I've never been in demand before. How does that work? Now, to the point there, the question, the point was that the Fair TV has done some phenomenal things, family good things on a technical side. They now have the shows that they tape and the meetings that they tape on demand. You can go to the website, which is jerrywwwww...
...fairtv.org central.com, or you can go to the town website and delay right there.
All right. So, and it's great, I think, from a standpoint of technology and proven communication for our community, getting everybody more involved, whether you're available at 8 o'clock on Tuesday or not, I think that's phenomenal, and Fair TV is a phenomenal resource.
Yep. So, continuing. Retiree benefit contributions. The expenses grown from approximately $4.3 million in 2009 to $8.3 million in 2011. An increase of $4 million, or 93% in two years. Okay? This year's budget has that increase going to 33% higher. Okay? Now, in fairness, all right, the town benefited for about a decade by not contributing to the pension funds because of the actuary reports that said we were overfunded by over 120%. Okay? So the town did not contribute, right? Three things happened. There was the Madoff scandal, there was the cratering of the stock market, and there was the continuing increase in the cost of providing those services to our employees in the future. All three of those things add up to the liability increasing and our annual expense increasing. Okay? So we're not immune to what you're reading in newspapers from around the United States as to what's going on in the world and in the United States. Another change, the paving and road maintenance is now included in the operating budget. Now, it's not to say road maintenance was not included in the operating budget, but this is actually long-term paving initiatives, used to be funded through the non-recurring capital. There's still a portion of that that will be over the next couple of years as we transition to having all paving completely included in the operating budget on a go-forward basis. We have a lot of roads in this town. They need to be repaved. Depending on the utilization of the road, depends on how many years it can go, but it can be quite expensive to pave a mile of road. And we have a lot of road in the town that needs to be maintained. And after winter like this, you know the people of DPW are going to have their hands full in the spring as well. So that is a budget driver. Mike and I indicated we would split the next couple of slides, as we have been doing. Mike, you want to take it?
Good. The ongoing budget challenges, new labor contracts. A town, the Board of Ed, Police Department, Fire Department, is a service business. 70% of our costs are labor-related. So it's all about people, in a real sense. We've got, as we look at contracts, the approval process is, they go from either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Ed to the RTM. All right? Little trivia fact here, the Board of Finance doesn't vote or offer an opinion on labor contracts that make up 70% of our budget. We're spending a lot of time reviewing our budget on annual basis. 70% of the costs are labor. How much is debt service? Nine? That's roughly, that's roughly 80% of our budget, is controlled by multi-year agreements. So when we review a budget on a year-to-year basis, there's only about 20% that we can effectively change. So when we look at labor contracts and why they're so important, and why they get so much press and a play, and why they get so much review by the RTM, is because that sets your tax increase for the next few years. That's it.
This is an important point.
Oh, thanks, Tom. Tom just pointed out that we're required by state statute to fund the contracts. So if we have a labor agreement, we can't decide, "Yeah, we agreed to pay you more, but we're not going to."
And you'd be surprised how many times you get asked that question. Well, why don't you just not pay them? Cut the budget. We're not allowed by statute.
Well, it's the same reason that if you want to reduce your household expenses, you just don't pay half your mortgage payment this month. You kind of have a long-term agreement to do that. We have the same thing with our unions and with our bondholders. One of the complications or complexities, or really fun parts of this budget, is the fact that we have seven labor contracts that are not finalized yet. So we're going to have to guess how much to put in for the current year and for next year, as we go through this process. And we hope that we guess well.
How can the taxpayer expect to know those contract negotiators?
Talk to the Board of, the two points are that the selectman, first selectman negotiates the contracts, and the RTM approves them. On the education side, the, excuse me, Dr. Title?
Yes.
It's the, you actually have a committee that negotiates the contract? Is it the superintendent or Board of Ed? I just want to be...
Yeah, there's a, there's a subcommittee of board members and central office staff along with labor attorney. They negotiate the contracts that are approved by the board.
Okay. So it's, so you want to stay in touch with the Board of Education on that? And then again, those contracts also go to the RTM?
Only the teachers and the district.
Okay.
Who do we email?
If you go to the website, RTM members, Board of Selectmen, Board of Education.
And Mike, that in the last go-round, there was also a Board of Finance member, Mr. Bolito, who was an advisor during that process, a member of that committee, Dr. Beto O'Rourke. So we actually had a Board of Finance member who sat in and gave advice in the background.
Okay, what Mr. Kerry is saying just is that a Board of Finance member was asked, and thank you for that, to participate in the committee as a liaison on that. And the same thing on the town side, so we appreciated that.
Okay. One point to finalize on the labor side, and we're constantly reminded of this as well. The state does have a role to play there because we're a binding arbitration state. So when there is a dispute that arises and cannot be resolved between the union and the town negotiators, it can be submitted for binding arbitration. Which means that what happened in other towns around the state, what happened around the country, particularly around the state, can influence what our negotiating teams can do with our unions. And this is a point where Mr. Hiller constantly reminds me, the double-edged sword is, it's fantastic to have the AAA bond rating. It's fantastic for everyone to know that you're one of the few municipalities in the country that have that. But it's tough to cry when you have that rating, that you can't afford to keep up with paying for what some of the increases are for your employees on an annual basis.
And when 70% of your costs are labor, it really is pretty straightforward. If you want to control costs, you do one of two things. You control the cost per head, or you control the number of heads. So when folks come in and say, "Oh, yeah, just cut costs, just do this, reduce this," when you look at it, let me rephrase that question. Who do you fire? Who do you walk up to and say, "You don't have a job"? All right? So when you're talking about cutting the budget, that's really what it comes down to sooner or later, to make any significant change. And that's just math. That's not, I'm not taking a position, guys. That's just, that's how it is. We can't cut the debt service. That would be fun. Nobody wants to pay that. That's like your mortgage payment. We have to pay it. We agreed to pay it. We have it over, you know, 10, 20, 15, 15, 20 years. So after that, it's number of heads. Number of heads, control your insurance, control your medical, control your retirement, control your pension. Everybody clear on that? Yes?
It's also, you could just provide less services. I mean, you didn't, you don't have to have a raid.
That's true. All your fires, we want you to have those between Monday and Friday, preferably during the daylight hours. In the evening, it'll take a little bit longer to get there. So yes, I mean, you can reduce expenses, reduce services, a much more complex challenge, and assuming you think we're doing a great job at it now. But yes, that gets into a very complex point. I didn't mean to belabor that too much, but...
Well, you don't necessarily have to cut the labor costs if you reduce benefits.
No, you're absolutely right.
There are components of, you have to look at total compensation, and there are ways you can do that, and everything from sick days to vacation days to benefits to, to, all of that. Okay? So there's all of that, but that's a very, that's the negotiation side. And again, that's something that we, as the Board of Finance, don't get to be involved in.
Correct. And it's very complicated due to the Board of Selectmen, or rather, the First Selectmen or the Board of Education, the RTM, and then whatever happens there could go to the state. It's a very complex problem. There was the, the RTM last summer rejected a fireman's contract, right? Read about that in the press and all that. That's still not revolve, resolved. It still hasn't gone to arbitration, if it is heading to arbitration. So now they're operating for another year without a contract.
Starting July 1st, we should start, that was only a two-year contract, so starting July 1st, we should be negotiating the next round of that. So we'll be starting to negotiate the next contract before this contract's finalized.
Right. Which gets, continuing the point, on ongoing budget challenges, you have pension and OPEB funding contributions. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits.
You got it.
Yeah, all right. Other post-employment benefits, medical benefits and the like. Contributions for these funds are calculated by an actuary every year, based on fund balances and go-forward assumptions, which we talked about earlier. Right now, the expenses are increasing annually, and based on discussions with our actuaries, it is anticipated that these will continue to increase in the future. As I alluded to earlier, the Board of Finance has requested a review of all actuarial assumptions, including the investment return assumptions, and revised liability calculations for the next fiscal year, to address the comments from earlier this evening. Important to note, because we get a lot of questions as well about the Madoff situation and about that, how did that happen and that type of thing. Investment decisions and fund management is controlled by the town's two pension boards, not by our Board of Finance. Our job is to work with the actuaries, to take their assumptions, to understand what's going into the plan, and then to properly appropriate the funds each and every year to fund the contributions as they move forward. We are asked, and it has been mentioned in the press recently, what are the recoveries going to be from the Madoff situation? It is ongoing litigation. The full recovery is not yet known. There has been some recovery to date, and there's estimated that there will be more recovery. We're due to get another update, which would be in private executive session regarding this issue, but because it is an ongoing litigation situation, we're not really allowed to comment on that publicly. And I would refer any questions on that for legal purposes directly to the First Selectmen's office, and he and the pension boards can address them as he sees fit.
The one thing we can add that is good news is that in terms of the loss in the mention, in the Madoff Fund, none of that recovery is included in the current planning and projections for the pension fund. So anything we do get back would be a positive effect and improve our situation there. We didn't put anything in, or the pension board and the actuaries didn't put anything in for that.
Only what's already been recovered, which off the top of my head, I don't remember the amount, but you're right, they didn't put any allowance for future recoveries. Absolutely correct. Sir?
Was there any assessment of the pension boards regarding their fiduciary responsibility?
Yes, you'd have to take that up with the First Selectmen's office. We did, as our board, when the pension, when the situation first happened, we did request that the pension board come before us and explain from their viewpoint what had happened. They did that here two years ago, just after it happened. I know since that time, they have, there's been some turnover within the pension board itself, normal turnover, okay, people's terms were up, as well as they've hired a new investment advisor that assists them in that portfolio. And my understanding is that's being monitored significantly at this point in time. We do get reports once in a while about, I want to say, every six months or quarterly, regarding their investment, what their investment breakout is, just so that we know, okay? But we don't have the opportunity to influence that. We're not part of those investment decisions.
The, the RT, just to, yeah, the RTM did review the process.
That's true.
Did change some of the ordinances and did improve the reporting process as part of that. But in terms of, if you're looking at a review of the pension boards, that really comes under the heading of the First Selectmen. He's the person that appoints those people, subject to approval of the RTM.
And I think he also chairs one of the pension boards.
Asking if in retrospect, we say, we broke some of the standards that we set for investments, and in so doing, need some discipline on that. And did we find fault in our retrospective on that?
Fault by our pension board?
Yeah.
We didn't, and I don't know if the pension, I know the pension board has reviewed some of their policies and that type of thing, and tried to formalize some of those a little bit better, but that would be a question best put to the chairman of the pension board.
But nobody asked him?
When you say, "Nobody asked him."
No, there was a review. Number one, there was a review by the town's legal team. Number two, there was a review by the RTM. Number three, there was a discussion with the board... Number three, there was a discussion with the Board of Finance. And number four, the First Selectmen is responsible, as the chief executive officer, to take any actions he sees fit as regards the pension board. Since there's ongoing litigation, I don't know what their review conclusion.
Madoff, I'm wondering about our procedures and the validity of them.
That's why the RTM reviewed it.
That's what you need to talk to the First Selectmen about in terms of...
Exactly. Yes, sir?
Just to clarify, am I correct in assuming the pension board reports to the First Selectmen and not to you?
That's correct.
Absolutely.
And so therefore, you really don't have the ability for, you can ask them nicely to come and talk to you, but they really don't have it.
We're reminded of our lack of ability on a routine basis.
How about, instead of lack of ability, how about lack of authority? Let's clarify that. But to your point, you're absolutely correct, and in fact, we did do that. And they were very cordial and came before us. And they were under, we don't have subpoena power, so they could have said absolutely not, but they did not. They came and spoke with us exactly about the issues as they took place.
If you read the charter...
My point is very simple. Two years after the fact, we should know, as taxpayers, was there improper management within the town?
No, I understood the question. And we don't know. And I agree with you, but I think that, I think that what I was trying to determine was whether it was a question of these elements or whether it was a question of...
Well, they know much more than we do, and I thought they would know.
The pension board, if this question was played out, if they can answer it, we need to ask them.
Well, and let me say this.
Two years later, they can know.
No, 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 let me, let me say this. Let me answer the question as you just put it directly. Do I have any knowledge that there was any fault found with our pension board regarding the Madoff scandal? No, I have no knowledge of that. Does that mean that there wasn't fault found? No, I can't say that because I'm not privy to those conversations, because that's not part of my area of responsibility or authority. That would have to be directed to the First Selectmen's office, the town attorney, as well as the pension board themselves. I will say, the Board of Finance and the RTM both reviewed the issue to make sure that we were comfortable on a go-forward basis as to what was going on with the management and administration of those funds. But in terms of, to your direct question, I have no knowledge of that, nor would I.
There are certain things about our charter, and you look at how we're organized, that there's some very clear and clean reporting responsibilities. There's other things where a certain amount of independence is maintained, so that there's no, how should I say it, undue political influence, any more than normal. And there are certain things that are surprising. Like, when I got on the Board of Finance, I was amazed to learn that we didn't look at labor contracts at all. I'm like, "Okay, you're asking us to approve the budget. It says that in the charter. 70% of the expenses and a whole lot of the growth are confined in labor, and we don't look at any of the contracts that come through to do that." I'm like, "How does that make any sense?" But this is New England, and we have our own quirky ways for how we deal with things. So it doesn't mean it's bad, it's just interesting from a standpoint, because the RTM certainly does look at it, the Board of Selectmen certainly does look at it.
Actually, Mike, just to clarify, I'm on the RTM. We can only vote to approve or disapprove of contracts that are awarded by the Board of Education, but we're not involved in negotiations.
That's an excellent point.
Could you repeat that?
It is, his point was that the RTM can only vote to approve or disapprove of a labor contract that they have been presented. The negotiation responsibilities for those labor contracts on the town side are firmly at the hands of the First Selectmen and whomever he deems to work with. And on the Board of Education side, they're firmly in the hands on the Board of Education, however they handle with a subcommittee and their outside representatives. Excellent point. Thank you for that. So they get an up or down vote on, on those contracts. They don't get to negotiate.
Done, right?
And if we vote it down, it goes directly to...
You want to just mention we're done?
Yeah. And we're, yeah, exactly. We're done, but we will take questions as we have been doing.
Only easy questions at first, though.
I think the easy ones are out of the way. Sir?
Do you mind if I, because I won't hear the question?
Please. I'll tell you what, Mike and I will share a mic, and you can pass this one around. How's that? If there's...
Tom, I'll give you the mic for any questions I can't answer.
Actually, I wanted to, actually, I just wanted to tell Mr. Flynn that your sweater wasn't that bad in that meeting, which I saw that show.
You're from Fashion Week?
I am a Syracuse University graduate.
And so am I.
There you go.
Orangemen. Class of '77?
Ninety.
Showing my age. And I wanted to reiterate something that Mike said, I'll just say quick, that in regards to Fair TV, that I wanted to thank very much, who was here just a little while ago, our, my state rep, Kim Fawcett, who was very instrumental in establishing Fair TV for Fairfield County. Kim's left. But anyway, my, my question, my actual question is, when you were talking before about a reserve for the town, is that sort of like, I'm a board president of my condominium, and we have a reserve? And basically, when we went to do our roofing project, which I think Mr. Title, our superintendent, knows about roofs, what's going on there, we went for a loan, and basically, we got our loan because of, our loan had to be satisfied with how much was in our reserve to get the loan. We had to maintain a certain amount, we have to maintain a certain amount in our reserve to satisfy the loan from the bank. Is that sort of the same? And I'll end that. Thank you.
Yes, it's sort of the same. You, you need to maintain the reserve amount in order to maintain the credit rating, in order to get the advantageous interest rates. Okay? So the extra spot, the extra thing in there, is that you need to go before the credit rating agencies. And the credit rating agencies have a bucket of items that they look at, right? One of the buckets of items they look at is what is your reserve balance as a percentage of your overall budget? So it is a factor in how you determine the credit rating. To your point, that credit rating then determines what you're able to do on the market to get your bonds, et cetera. And it allows the taxpayers to save money, because we get lower interest rates, lower interest costs, and we're able to maintain that 10% of debt service, right?
Right. And the, and the reserve is very important because it, which we found out, our previous boards who didn't do their due diligence and, and kept adding to a reserve, we came into a real problem with funding our roofs because of it. So it works the same way with the town with the reserve, correct?
Correct.
Right? Okay, thank you.
And that's also, when you, when you hear us talk about the AAA rating for the town, that's the highest credit level rating you can get. All right? So one of the missions on the Board of Finance that we're all sworn to when we get elected is thou shalt not lose the AAA credit rating. All right? Because that affects the interest rate we pay on bonds, and since we borrow about $220 million at the moment, that would be a big piece of change. Yes?
Do our bonds have a callability where we could call some of the higher interest rate bonds and make advantage of our...
Hold on one second.
Do our bonds have a callability where we could call some of the earlier bonds that we issued and reissue them at lower rates?
Yeah. If you've been following our bond activity, we have done a tremendous amount of refinancing in the recent past, because interest rates on bonds have dropped way down. And what happens in kind of our segment of the market, unlike a homeowner, is that there's a bunch of guys in New York that call us up whenever they figure they can make money on commissions on refinancing our bonds. So we just have to wait for the phone ring. They come up, explain to us how it makes money for the town, and then the First Selectmen and the Chief Fiscal Officer put together a proposal for the Board of Finance, and after us, the, the RTM would approve it also, to refinance. So we've done a lot of that, and I think we've done, I think we've refinanced, I'm going to say almost everything recently, so...
We saved a couple hundred thousand dollars as...
We saved, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars as near as about a year and a half ago on interest costs on doing just that. Okay?
Any other questions?
Charlie?
Where's the person?
Charlie, what's the...
Oh, thank you. Hi, the train station. Do we have any kind of projection how much income that will be generating for the town and hopefully within the next year? Or can we not start counting our chickens before they hatch, I guess?
There was a brief discussion in our meeting last night regarding that very issue, and we're waiting for a report back from the First Selectmen regarding building permits. They have an estimate, as Mike said before, and other revenue of what building permits are going to be next year. I think Mr. Flato represented last night that some of that was related to some thoughts he had on the train station. In terms of other revenue and things like that, nothing in the current budget cycle related to that.
The other way to say that is that we counted on a lot of the tax revenue from all the buildings that are going to surround the train station on that development site. Since there are no buildings currently being built, there's no revenue expected from that at the moment. There's some indirect revenue from that train station and going out, but the train station itself, there may be some way we make some money off the parking situation there, but there's some very complex contract formulas that sound good at the moment, but we're not quite sure.
And we haven't included.
And, yeah, oh yeah, we haven't put, we haven't put that revenue into our budget. But I believe the date I heard actually was October 22nd. And you can, you can consider that an...
10/11?
That's a confirmed rumor. No, but we were at the meet, whose birthday was it? It was somebody's birthday, it was October 22nd, and the First Selectmen said, "Yes, that's the date I heard."
Another way to look at it is, Election Day is November 8th, so I'm assuming it'll be just before our election.
Any other questions? Folks, thank you very much for letting us, oh, one more, one more. Under the wire, he made it in.
It's related to the, the reserves issue, and, and you know, the current article's been going around in the press. Is there a difference between regular reserves and the insurance reserves that we've been talking about, between the Board of Ed and taking the $2 million, and what have we done in the past and all that?
Yes.
Clarify that as far as what's been done in the past and why, and why is it a problem now?
Sure. There's two funds. The first one we spoke of is the general fund, which is what the gentleman was alluding to. You have the general fund, and that's what they determine whether you have enough in there, 5% of your operating budget. That, that has to do with general town operations. Right? And it's the undesignated and designated fund balance, okay? On the other side of the ledger, there's what they refer to as the internal service fund. The internal service fund is essentially the town's insurance fund, okay? The articles that you've been reading, I guess, within the last 24 hours or so, relate to what's going on within the internal service fund and the insurance monies within that fund, right? What happens in there, that is a shared fund between the town and the Board of Education, and it services employee benefits, meaning medical costs, workman's compensation costs, and liability costs for town insurance, okay? What's happened is, the Board of Education, through following their insurance consultants' Aons' recommendations through a past number of years, had built up a surplus balance within that account, okay? A reserve balance within that account. Due to budgetary pressures, the Board of Education had elected to dive into that reserve, okay? Last year, they did it for about $1.6 million after the budget process was done, okay? This year, they put within their budget documents that they plan on using another $1.9 million. So what they're doing is draining that insurance fund, which is therefore draining the town's internal service fund, which could cause us problems, okay? In fairness to the Board of Education, okay, and their brethren and their colleagues that preceded them, they did contribute the appropriate amounts in prior years. So I understand it. The problem is, as I said last night at our meeting, they're doing it in what I would refer to, we're trying to step up the town side, right? And make sure that they have adequate reserves. They're taking the elevator on that side and lowering the reserves at a much faster rate, by lowering it by several million dollars in the course of a year, okay? In the course of a couple of years. The issue that presents, looking in the future, a couple of years, if they continue to drain that reserve, the reserve is no longer going to exist, and all of a sudden, whammo, you're going to have a large tax increase in that year, in that last year, because what you're doing is saying, "I had, let's say, a $1.9 million liability that I was covering from a reserve, no more reserve. All of a sudden, my expenses in one year go up $1.9 million for nothing else other than your insurance coverage." So you're artificially lowering your insurance costs now, and you're going to pay the piper later on for it.
Now, what, I'm sorry, what, what body approves the use of those funds or dipping into those funds?
That's the problem. There's the rub, is that there was not enough communication, and my, my position, I think Mr. Tetro agrees based on comments last night, between the town side professionals and the Board of Ed side professionals, and in other words, the financial area, okay, regarding what the implications of using that reserve were to both entities, because it's a shared sandbox. And what one entity does directly impacts the other entity, okay? So there's got to be a better coordination, there's got to be better communication, the right hand has to know what the left hand's doing, and they need to come up with a scenario that works for both parties, so that they don't drain the reserves to a artificially low level and cause us external problems.
So that, so that's not a, RTM can vote, the Board of Ed can vote, the, you know, central office, you know, Dr. Title's office can just say, "We're going to use those funds." It's, there's no clear cut?
At the end of last year, okay, the, the simple answer to your question is yes, because at the end of the last budget cycle, and Dr. Title was not here, okay? At the end of the last budget cycle, after the Board of Education went through the town bodies for approval, okay? The decision was made subsequent to the approval. There was a $3 million budget cut. Remember, the town bodies get to cut on one item, okay? One line. They don't get to say where that money comes from. So after that budget cut was done, approved by the town boards, it goes back to the Board of Education. Then the Board of Education revisits their own budget and says, "How are we going to account for this $3 million?" The decision was made at that time that they had excess in the reserve, so they dipped into the reserve to the tune of $1.6 million to cover $1.6 million of that $3 million budget cut. It was done. It doesn't have to go through any other town body, okay? That's what happened. And that's, this year, the Board of Education was upfront about it in terms of it's within their budget document. Dr. Title spoke to it last night, okay? He disclosed that to us last night, he and his team, that within the current budget document, the intention is for them to dip into that reserve fund by another $1.9 million in the next fiscal year, which causes us concerns on a town-wide basis, because it lowers that joint internal service fund by a hefty amount.
Mike, I'll let you do something. You might call us back.
Let me ask a tough question. You got, you guys unfortunately let the town medical reserve go negative $1 million, while the Board of Ed was at $5 million positive. How do you justify what you just said with allowing the town to go negative? Shouldn't you allow the town to go to zero and not allow them to go negative?
Absolutely. However, we're nine volunteers. We work one day, one evening a month, and guess what? Some of this information, we don't get automatically, we have to ask for it. And some of the information on this, in this area, because it's not in the budget book, as you well pointed out, it's a separate analysis, an analysis of what's happening with those funds, what the expenses are, what's going in, what's coming out. Over the last five years, we have fought for, and over the last five years, if you look at the adjustments the Board of Finance has made, those have been, a number of those adjustments have been to the insurance line item, to increase that, to make sure we're covering that, all right? Some of those adjustments where it was reduced and how it got, were not such, not things that the Board of Finance at the time may have not had the information on, and we may not have seen. So now that we see it, you know, as volunteers, we continue to look at how we do a better process. One of the things that, that Tom, as our chairman, has initiated is a review of the budget every year. When we're done, what could we have done better? What went well? What do we have to improve on? What are the problems? And so as a group, we're trying to focus on continuous improvement and getting that to keep moving forward. And I think in the last four or five years, you've seen, we've changed the budget process, we've changed where we spend our time, we try and spend it on some of the bigger items. You're worried about this fund going negative? In the last five years, we stopped planning to spend more money than we bring in. Think about that one. When Tom and I got on the board, and even though he looks much...